Welcoming here today a new member of our planning committee. Who is replacing our much missed and valued colleague. Richard McLindon. So welcome to Sarah Doyle. And welcome also to councillor John Prince, who's an alternate today for councillor Tony Conception. So I hand over to you now, Michael.
Thank you Chair and echo the Chair's comments to welcome and good morning to colleagues today's meeting. Just for purposes of clarity and for the record councillor Doyle is welcome to this our first meeting in her new role as a planning committee member. And will be joining us as an observer for today's meeting. So she can familiarise herself with the procedures for the committee and will join us formally for a future meeting as a full member. In terms of the usual procedural requirements, I'll just briefly run through our names and confirm you can all see and hear me okay. So firstly, the Chair, we've had you speaking already, so that's fine. Welcome to councillor John Prince. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John. That's excellent. Moving on councillor Thompson, can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Excellent, welcome. Thank you Helen. Councillor Hanson, good morning and welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Good morning, Michael. Fine, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Kennedy, good morning and welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you. Been having some technical problems, but it seems okay now.
Okay, thank you for your patience Malcolm, we much appreciate it. Next to councillor Marat, good morning, can you hear us okay?
Morning, Michael. Everything's fine, yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Juarez, can you hear us okay?
Yes, good morning, loud and clear, thank you.
That's excellent, thank you. We don't appear to have councillor done here. And just to confirm in terms of apologies, we have apologies from councillor Dave Cummings and also from councillor Tony Conception. Which we've already welcomed councillor Prince as the alternate for today's meeting. With that in mind, I'll move on to the next item of business, which is our notification of declaration of interest. So firstly, do members have any interest to declare one of the items on today's agenda? Just as a reminder, obviously if you do become aware of any interest to join proceedings, if you just indicate accordingly. Prior to the start of that item concerned, and obviously we can update accordingly. So there's none to declare and we'll move on therefore to our next item, which is the minutes of our last virtual meeting. As held on the, as held earlier on in January. So could I refer colleagues to copies of your, of your, your agenda and ask if you had the opportunity to review the minutes? And if there's any comments from you at all, or if not, happy to indicate clearly on screen if you approve accordingly. Thank you Billy. Chair, are you happy with them? Happy to indicate approval?
I am, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, that's excellent. I'm pleased to advise I've got no urgent items of business to report to today's committee. So with that in mind, I'm gonna take us straight on to with the agreements of yourselves. Agenda item number four, which relates to a site at fourteen Waterloo Road, Liverpool three, which is in Kirkdale Ward. And again, for your reference and benefit, the case officer report and the location plan are set out on pages nine to forty six of your agenda pack. Chair, if I can revert to you.
Yes, I'd like to invite Jonathan Pritchard to lead us through the presentation on this application. Jonathan, are you there to come in?
I am, and I've clicked on my microphone, so hopefully that, that is working.
We can hear you loud and clear, Jonathan. So if you'd like to talk us through the presentation now, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members. First slide, can I move on to the next slide, please? Just as, those are introduction slides next. Thank you, leave it there, please. Madam Chair, it's with great pleasure that I am able to present fourteen Waterloo Road to you on behalf of all those. Who have worked so hard in these difficult times to bring this project together and make this project happen. We have consulted widely over the past three years. Firstly, by knocking on the city's doors to understand the magnitude of the ten streets proposals. Then through a pre-up. Then carrying out amendments to the scheme as necessary during the course of our application. Before making our formal application today. We have consulted with your urban design team and conservation and are very mindful of the impacts these proposals. Have on both the world heritage site and the history of Liverpool. We have taken on board ecology. The impact that this building will have on the environment locally, on air quality, wind, noise. And have designed our building to be fully accessible for wheelchair users. With rise and fall kitchen units, accessible bathrooms and wide corridors. Next slide, please. Thank you. A little on the site. Located at the heart of the expanding city to the north towards the ten streets. And on the corner of Waterloo Road and Paisley Street. The site takes in both Galton Street and Greenock Street. And is subject to a road closure notice under the Town and Country Planning Act. You may remember the site as the former Frank's Cafe on the Dock Road. Where tea was served in pint pots and legends were made. You will often hear me talk about traditions and heritage. Both are important to us. Next slide, please. A little bit about our proposals. Our proposal is to build a hundred and thirty five one, two and three bedroom apartments for sale. With seventeen hundred square feet of ground floor commercial space, car parking and cycle storage. Breakout areas and amenity space. Our original proposals were for a high-rise tower development. But following early consultations and in the light of the tall buildings policy, our proposals were changed. Next slide, please. This shows a section through the site. As you can see, now, now we step down in scale from the neighbouring seventeen storey development on the other side of the road of Paisley Street. To a fifteen storey proposal plus ground. Stepped down further to a roof garden at the thirteenth floor. That is protected by the prevailing winds and encourages ecology and respects the environment. If I can just say a little bit more on the materials before I close, next slide, please. There is no surprise that our proposal is to build, our proposal is to build in brick around a steel frame. Following the rhythm and pattern of the brick warehouse buildings that so often have defined the city. This brickwork is punctuated by deep set window reveals that conceal the window frame. Thus combining traditional detailing with twenty first century expectations. In summary. We have consulted extensively over three years in order to bring these proposals to you today. We have followed the traditions, rhythms and character of the area and proposed brick as our principal building material. We have listened to the city and have taken on board your guidance over policy, particularly the tall buildings policy. And have stepped the building down from the city towards the ten streets. And have created a sustainable building for the future, reflecting the past. We hope you like it and we commend it to you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting and I appreciate you bringing some of the historical perspective there. Are there any questions for Jonathan Pritchard? So councillor Hanson.
Yeah, thanks.
Next councillor Prince.
Just in, in, in terms of the disabled access, I think you said your whole building is, is wheelchair accessible? Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, the note says twelve of the apartments, nine percents are wheelchair accessible. Which is in conflict with what you just said.
Uh, thank you for the correction. Nine of them are classed as accessible apartments. Oh, the number, uh, accessible apartments, the whole building is designed for accessibility. But, uh, not for, um, full time living. And I referred to the rise and fall, um, kitchens in our accessible apartments.
I think I've read in the notes that the, um. You don't intend to develop, um, this, 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 uh, project. Rather just get planning permission and go out to, um, to see if you can get developers to come in and, and build it. Am I correct in my understanding?
No, that's, um, uh, no, that's not our intention. The intention of the client is to, um, uh, build out, um, subject to planning provision today. So no, we are, we are building.
And also in, in terms of all these apartments for sale?
They are, yes.
How, how, how are they gonna be launched on the market? It's not gonna be fractional sales, is it?
Uh, no, they, they will be, um, uh, sold off plan if people come through to, to buy that. We've got a marketing team, uh, everything is kicking off, uh, um, as of this week with the, uh.
Can't hear you breaking up.
Uh, hopefully everything will pick up following just now. There will be sales, sales on the open market, uh, for owner occupiers or, um, um, the tenancy agreements.
So are you happy with that councillor Hanson?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Yeah, okay. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. And over to councillor John Prince now, please.
Hey, thank you. I've got a few points, one's the same as Joe Hanson's actually. I'm just quoting from the information. The Waterloo Road elevation has some architectural interest. But it is in a poor state of repair and is not listed. It's in close proximity of a number of grade two listed buildings. Point that Joe has just mentioned, nine percents are wheelchair accessible. You've got twenty parking spaces only and there are one hundred and thirty five flats. Originally, there were going to be one hundred and twenty flats. And it was going to be a fourteen storey building, but now it's got a hundred and thirty five flats and it's a sixteen storey building. And then finally, are the existing buildings undesignated heritage assets? Uh, my last one is, it's got his cladding zinc, is zinc safe? Um, can we just go fast through the one for me please? Thank you very much.
Um, so Jonathan, did you get all those three questions?
Um, I, I, I did, but I may not remember them all in, uh, so remind me if I forget one, one or two of them.
Okay.
Going backwards from the ones that I, um, uh, zinc cladding, um, uh, yes. Um, we're very, very conscious of cladding. Our materials are generally brick. We have cladding on the, uh, upper roof, stepping back from the parapet walls. They are, um, uh, um, it is a cladding material, it's a lightweight material. It does meet the current standards for, uh, fire safety and spread of flame. Uh, so we are very comfortable and confident that, um, uh, we do, we are not, um, designing in a problem for the future. Um, uh, I remember you were saying that the, um, original building on the site. Um, uh, there is an original building on the site, it does have some character and merit. We did originally put a proposal together to retain that particular structure, uh, and build with it. Um, that became very contorted, um, and when we went back up into consultation. Um, it became quite clear that, um, uh, we were, um, actually putting more into the, um, uh. The, the, the thought process than we were getting back as a, as a return. And so we designed out retaining the existing structures. Um, might have been nice, but it was very contorted and, and it didn't work terribly well, but we did explore it quite extensively. Uh, with both, uh, with, with the planning consultants and the, and the office there. Um, our car parking, uh, ratio, um, yes, we are, um, uh. Twenty car parking spaces, we're not anticipating that, um, uh, there's a high level of car parking. We have consulted with highways, uh, they have accepted the proposals that we've done. We have a contribution back up to the highways, uh, policy for the city. Um, and it is considered that it is sufficient for the needs of the, uh, the building itself. Um, uh, and, um, and from experience, a number of, of, of properties don't, uh, pick up the car parking provisions. So it has been something that we have consulted with, um, and provided in accordance with the recommendation of highways.
Thank you for that. You've answered all the points I've gotten out of there, so thank you. Uh, are there any other questions, um, for Jonathan Pritchard? In that case, I'm going to hand over now to our case officer. Oh, Malcolm, councillor Kennedy, if you'd like to come in, you may.
It, it's just a quick one. That area has, is experiencing a, a great deal of building at the moment. Um, the Waterloo Apartments are surrounded by developments, the, the new, uh, cruise terminal. And, uh, another block to the side. How do you intend to liaise with local councillors and local residents as the building is taking place?
I'm very happy to have, um, uh, as much involvement with local, um, uh, councillors and residents as the building goes through. Um, uh, and, and encourage all the discussions that might come back and filter to us. Um, it is, it's, it's, um, a building in the city centre or just off the city centre. But it's a building that we're, uh, quite familiar with having to, to work in the, the city confines. Um, I'm sure there will be issues, um, and I'm sure that we will have the opportunity to try and work with as many people that we need to, to address them. Um, uh, it's a, um, a building site is well, well served. I'm not foreseeing any problems with, um, construction traffic, um, in the area. Other than the normal that we would expect in trying to build a building, um, uh, and create the development. Open for any discussions that come back.
Thank you for that. And of course, there are rules about, um, the management of the construction. So can I hand over to our case officer now, if you'd like to come in now, Felicity?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. I'm Felicity Collins, I'm the case officer for this application. And thanks Jonathan for the presentation and for the questions there from, uh, from the councillors. Um, I won't go through, uh, you know, in, in any great detail, um, recap on the proposals. I think we've, we've, that's been covered by the architect. Um, but just to pick up a couple of things that came through in the questions there, um. The accessibility of the building's been reviewed by, um, our inclusive design officer who was actually very, very pleased with the proposals. I think it can be very confusing, the terminology around this, but a lot of developments that we see are only meeting M four two. Um, uh, compliance, which is visitable dwellings. The M four three, um, which is the nine apartments in this building. Is M four three fully wheelchair accessible for someone who has, um, that requirement to actually live in an apartment from day one? And that's not something that we've seen, um, in all schemes. Our, our new policy, um, in the, in the emerging local plan is, is pushing towards that. And this development is, is, um, is very close to, is meeting with that. So our inclusive design officer has been very, very complimentary about this scheme in terms of what it's doing for accessibility. Um, the, uh, parking provision, as, as the architect picked up, we have reviewed that with our highways officers. It is, um, a low level for the number of apartments in the building. But it is similar to other, other developments that we've, um, granted permission for in the area. Reflecting the fact that this is a, a very much a city fringe, very close to the city centre location. It's very accessible, um, with public transport. And the architects provided an internal, um, car parking area which you can access for servicing and deliveries. So, um, there is space for, um, for drop off and, and deliveries within the, the ground floor plan. Um, and our highways officers are supportive of, of that. In relation to losing the buildings, um, on the site, obviously there, there is some architectural interest there and, and some, you know, um. It, it, the, the restaurant on the site has been there for a long time. There's a lot of, um, um, a lot of people who hold that. Dear to, uh, to their, their own, um, knowledge of that area. Um, unfortunately, it's, it has been confirmed that the intention is to sell the site, so the intention is to redevelop the site. So, um, looking at whether that building was suitable for retention. Our conservation officers in Historic England have not, um, raised any concerns with the loss of that building. Um, in terms of its, its architectural merit, um, really because it's, um, there's been so many changes to, to the buildings and, and there is, um. Uh, it, it's not, um, something that they see needs to be retained on the site. That said, um, you know, we do recognise that there is some interest and we've put a condition on that requires, um. Our, um, recording of that building before it's demolished, so, um, so that will take place before it goes, um. Other than that, I think, um. There's probably nothing else to, to cover that hasn't been covered already. There have been, um, uh, some objections, tant objections that we've received, um, in relation to the proposal. Which relate to some of the issues we've picked up here, um, and the construction, um, impacts and traffic, which, which was, uh, raised at, at the end there by councillor Kennedy. Um, we have, uh, conditioned a construction management plan and construction environmental, um, management. So that, um, the amenity of, of residents and ecological and environmental amenity is protected. Um, during those construction phases. Uh, so I think we have, um, we have full support of the officers, um. And we have the status of conditions in place to try and control and mitigate any, any impacts, um, during construction operation. And on that basis, we're recommending approval subject to the, the section one oh six contributions. If there's any further questions, obviously I'm happy to answer those.
Yes, we've got one from councillor Hanson. Would you like to come in now, Joe?
Yeah, and, and it's in terms of what Malcolm picked up on before. Um, we have been inundated, um, with complaints from the Waterloo Warehouse and Waterloo key tenants. Over the development of the Alaman Ferry. Uh, and the actual conditions are given the, the lives of people living in those apartments. Um, excuse me. Uh, the, 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 the lives the last two, three weeks are absolutely horrible. Um, you look at that site, uh, which is not that big a site actually. Uh, when you look at it, the construct that's going on there, so that's a, that's a real concern, uh, to, to the residents and, and to ourselves. Um, my other question would be to highways. Uh, I don't know whether Andy Dingwall's still here or he's, he's on holiday somewhere, he's still here?
He's here.
Yeah, I'm still here councillor Hanson.
Well, 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 well done Andy, well done. I, I knew you wouldn't be there, so. Again, it's that old, old, old chestnut, you've got a hundred and thirty six apartments. And we're allowing twenty car parking spaces. Can you elaborate where those people come? Sure, there's gonna be more than twenty people living in those apartments. Um, that are gonna have a car. Where in God's name are they going to park? Dock Road is gonna be double yellow lines, that's where they're gonna park there. Backstreet, you can't park there. Princess Parade, you can't park there. Great Tower Street, you can't park there. So where in God's name are these people gonna park? Or are we working out that there's not gonna be more than twenty people with car ownership out of a hundred and thirty six apartments?
Would you like to come in here, um, Andy, please?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Andy Dingwall, Highway Development Control Team Leader. As with every application, we assess the, the impact on the highway very carefully. And one of those considerations is whether the proposed amount of car parking for the development is appropriate or not. Um, one of the main factors that we take into account is actually the location of the development. And as Felicity's already mentioned, this is, this is on the fringe of the city centre. You know, within, within a fifteen minute walk, you've got access to railway stations, you've got, um. Bus stations and, and a whole host of facilities within the city centre, so it's a highly accessible location in our view. And furthermore, on street parking is tightly controlled in that area, there are double yellow lines on the key routes. Um, and there, there's further restrictions on the side roads as well, so there's little opportunity. For, um, residents or visitors to park on street. But the reality is, if you're deciding to, uh, rent or to buy an apartment in this block. And you own a car or you intend to own a car. Uh, you, you're gonna need to make sure you've secured a car parking space. And the car parking spaces are limited, there's twenty spaces, it's about fifteen per cent of car parking across the site. Um, you know, if it's absolutely vital that you have a car parking space, then maybe this development isn't, isn't right for you. Um, it, it's unlikely people will choose to live in an apartment, um, without securing a car parking space if, if they rely on having a car. So that's the fair, that's, that's the other point to make. The, the other considerations are that there's, you know, other opportunities for people who don't own cars, so the city bike stations nearby. Um, we have contracts with Enterprise Car Club who, who provide locations across the city centre. Whereby people can rent, um, cars on an hourly basis. So if they do need to, to visit relatives perhaps, there's some distance away, then they've got the opportunity to rent one of those cars for a shorter period of time. So, you know, in summary, our view is that it's a highly sustainable location. The quantum of car parking is allowed, but that's not an issue for us because there's controls in place and it's an accessible location. So in summary, we've got no objections in that regard. Thanks Chair.
Thank you Andy. And yes, I mean, it's gonna be a different way of living for some of these people who are very near the central business district, isn't it? Um, as the residents of New York have found out, you know, it's no point having a car for most of them. A lot of them hire cars, are chauffeur driven. Um, can I hand back to Felicity to comment about the construction issues?
I haven't finished, I mean, I, I, I really objected to the statement that says. New York people have learned how not to, uh, buy cars, they're living, they're living the way they do. The reality is, I wish the planning and I wish yourself would realise. The, the rest of the Kirkdale area gets to fall out from all this. All, 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 all the people living there are coming into work and whatever are parking all over the estates within Kirkdale. Giving us massive problems and nobody's looking at it, nobody appears to care. And to make statements like it's okay in New York, it doesn't have to be okay in Kirkdale. I don't understand, I never understand the rationale which says twenty, twenty people, twenty cars. Fine, the rest of them walk into the city centre. That's just an absolute nonsense to me. And I would hope that somebody would put, put a statement in that says, if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll leave me job. Because nobody's taking consideration of the people that live around that area. I really think highways need to get a grip of how they're actually given permission in relation to this kind of parking and this kind of development.
Well, your comments have been noted councillor Hanson, but I was handing over to councillor Collins. Because there have been points made now about the construction issues. And I'd like her to comment on the construction management plan, please, if you would.
Yeah, I think, I, I do appreciate, um, councillor Hanson's comments, that the, the people who live in, in Waterloo Warehouse and the, the developments near there are. Um, at the moment and, and probably for some time to come, um, going to be surrounded by construction sites. And that's going to be very, very challenging for, for them. And, uh, obviously, you know, we'll do what we can through, um, to facilitate the new developments. But in a way that, that as far as possible is going to kind of keep those to, those impacts to a, a reasonable level. And, and the way that we do that is through conditioning, um, construction method statements being required. So we get the details of when noisy, um, activities might be happening. And through construction management, uh, sorry, construction environmental management plan condition. So again, that, that relates to, um, the developer, um, and the construction company when it comes on board. Committing to a whole suite of, um, protection measures that they can put in place to, to try and mitigate impacts on, um. Enviro, the environment in, in general, so down from, from ecology and, um, you know, water runoff onto the streets. Up to, um, when they're going to take, um, when they're going to do noisy construction activities. We also have, um, an informative that goes on most, um, major development, uh, applications. Which is to require, um, any, any works that are audible will be on the site boundary to take place within fixed hours. Um, and those are Monday to Friday and, um, and Saturday mornings. And if contractors, if contractors are, um, undertaking works outside those hours that are disturbing residents, we can take action and, um. And enforce that informative through environmental health colleagues.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to, I know that Myrna, you had your hand up before Malcolm, but Malcolm's a local, um, ward councillor. So I want to bring him in first and then I'll bring you in Myrna. So Malcolm, would you like to go ahead with your question? I think you're still on mute Malcolm. You need to unmute.
Sorry, I beg your pardon. Um, I'd like to raise a.
Um, I'd like to raise a a couple of points. One, the issue of highly accessible, that is, that that we're talking about here. Um trying to imagine living in a place which is surrounded by Great Howard Street, the Dock Road and the Strand, um it ain't that particularly accessible if you're just on foot. And I think Andy mentioned the bus station. Well, I'm sixty-seven, I wouldn't fancy walking from uh this development uh down to the the Liverpool One bus station, getting across all of those busy roads. So I think we're overplaying um the sense of highly accessible. Um and I'd like to just pick up on one phrase that was used in response to the construction management plan. Uh it was, we'll do what we can. Um councillor Hanson has raised the matter as well and 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 you yourselves have recognised the challenging environment that people in the Waterloo Warehouse uh are facing with the developments around them. Uh I know they would say to you that we'll do what we can is not sufficient because they fe- they are now facing challenges on a daily basis and what this development is bringing are more are more challenges. So it's about assuring them that there is constant communication and being able to deal with uh problems which can be mitigated. They're not mitigated sufficiently at the present time with current developments and both councillor Hanson and I get constant letters from residents uh in in that block about the conditions that they face. Even without Covid, many people feel blocked uh within their living accommodation.
Felicity, I'm gonna come back to you on that. And if Jonathan does want to come in with any points, would you put your hand up so I know? So Felicity, over to you. You need to unmute, Felicity. I can't hear anything.
Sorry, sorry about that. It seems to take a while to to recognize that I'm unmuting. Just, I I do completely take the point. Um I think perhaps what we can do is um through the construction uh method statement at point XV at the very end there, there is a requirement for a public engagement strategy um for the duration of the build. So I think, you know, perhaps that's somewhere that we need to um eh kind of in increase our uh vigilance when that comes in to discharge the condition that that public engagement strategy is um is effective and that we're uh we're pushing contractors to uh to actually have better liaison with their with their local community so that there is a line of communication and so the residents are being kept um more up to date. I mean, obviously, I can't speak for how that would play out on this development or how it um may or may not be working on other developments in the in the area, which is which may be causing problems at the moment. But I think, you know, we've we've got the mechanism there in the planning condition to require um eh the contractor to 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 uh com- apply with those best practice measures and we we can we can enforce that through the condition. Other than that, I don't think there's uh much more I can say really on 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 how we could do that.
Colleagues, very briefly, just a comment if I could ask, uh colleagues to unshare your screen, which you're inadvertently doing at this junction. I believe it's uh it should be the chair, if you just uh unshare your screen, please. Thank you. Almost there, Trish, you're now sharing the team's meeting itself now. Uh you just need to hit the uh, if you look along the top of your 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 team's meeting, there's like a little square box next to the microphone with a with a Oparo logo. If you just hit 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 that and it it should uh revert to stop the sharing. That's worked perfectly. Excellent. Thank you, Trish.
And in the meantime, I see that um Jonathan Pritchard wants to come in. So if you'd like to do that, Jonathan.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um just to um uh to add in a a um a briefing, uh it is always difficult building in a um an existing area uh with other residents around. Um with um uh my experience, um I've been building an uh an architect in Liverpool for um the better part of forty years and my practice goes back a long, long way. We've recently just built been building up in the the Baltic Triangle. I'm very familiar with the local residents um and the impact that we do have. And and I I really um uh uh go out and suffer for for them as well. We need to get on and build as quick and as uh meaningfully as we possibly can with the least amount of disruption. Um I've always, uh we will be building out. Um we are uh part of the Liverpool fabric uh and reputation is very important to to me personally. Um and I would, I always have made myself available to anybody who wants to come along and say, we've made a mistake, can we do something about it? Um and I think that's uh those sentiments is what we really need to portray across to the local residents to say, I'm sorry, but we're going to, that we are building, I'm sorry, there's going to be an inconvenience to you. Let us build as quickly as and as possible as we uh as we can. We have the right safeguards in place through the planning policy to restrict our working hours, uh to restrict the movement of site. So I'm fairly confident that at the end of it, we will all say, well, that was a difficult circumstance and and well, well done, and we got through to the end game. Little bit on car parking, um it is one of our discussions that we've been having is pool car parking and we know this, we know generally cities are going um more environmentally friendly away from the car. Um so there's a a reluctance to try and design in more than would be um uh deemed to be necessary. And I think some of that pool car parking may be an avenue that the city will end up having more and more of in years to come because we we probably need to get away from the reliance upon um uh cars generally. But my main point was to support the construction management plan, uh put those mechanisms in place and give you and give anybody as much reassurance as we possibly can that we will do whatever we can to make sure that we don't cause too much disruption. Um uh we need to build quickly, efficiently, uh and get get ourselves sorted. Thank you, Chair.
Then I invite now councillor Juarez to come in with her question.
Yes, thank you. Um I have um just a a question with regards to uh the report by Historic England. The planning application states that it's going to be sixteen storeys high, yet Historic England mentions that it's fourteen storeys high. Um uh um my concerns are really is to do with World Heritage uh status and the character of that particular area. Um within the council's report and by a council's um uh officer, it states that, you know, that the the um that the uh that site has already been compromised with regards to the Liverpool Waters scheme, but, you know, to carry on destroying of what is uh, you know, of um what's got that US payable heritage buffer zone, eh it can't, you you know, you can't keep trying to destroy that. But also, you know, I do have concerns about the parking, you know, twenty car parking space and only two allocated for disabled, I don't think that's quite realistic as, you know, you're gonna get people of all different age groups living at that location and some of them will have visitors and some of them will need to to travel outside. Also, one of the um objectors objected that, you know, that there's not enough uh green space within the city centre. Um and I think if we're going to start developing uh, you know, a a lot of apartments and encouraging uh people to live in the city centre, we have to think about the public realm, we have to think about green space. And this planning application is gonna bring in four hundred and ten thousand pounds of section one oh six. I think it's, if people can't drive out to get to the parks or to get to the the green spaces or um out of the city centre, then I think we need to start providing good quality green space in the city centre. That's what, yeah, that's all I've got to offer.
I'm going to hand over to that Felicity to comment on that and then I'm going to bring in Ian Rushford. So over to you, Felicity.
Thank you, thank you councillor Hart. Um just to cover those points in turn, yeah, you're absolutely correct. I've included in the report um Historic England's first response, um which was related to the fourteen-story proposal. Um and uh they were consulted again on the revised proposals and confirmed that they didn't have any um eh any further comments to make, so apologies, that's maybe not clear in that section three point two of the of the report. Um so Historic England's response really was that, you know, the the there will be a lot of change in that area and 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 essentially sort of defers to um our conservation officer uh for for the kind of local level view on uh on the impact of the proposal. Um our conservation officers ha- have reviewed it, the the application wasn't was supported by um a townscape and visual impact assessment, which was very helpful in showing how the the scale amassing of this proposal, um even at the sixteen-story, um which is a a staggered top two floors, um actually does does fit within the context of the 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 emerging kind of framework for that area. So we've got, we've obviously got the Liverpool Waters um development, which is an approved scheme and has some um in mu- much more sizable buildings on the waterfront. So in terms of the World Heritage Site views from the waterfront, this building would be would be fairly well um hidden. But in when we're looking at the the immediate local context, our conservation officer and and the application-supporting technical assessments have looked at that immediate context um and the the framework that we've got through the ten streets regeneration framework. And this building, the scale amassing of this building is 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 in line with with that proposal, it's stepping up from the city fringe um location up towards the uh the tall buildings cluster um around um eh around just slightly further into the city centre. So I think, you know, we 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 appreciate that there were, there is some historic interest in the buildings on the site, but I think this proposal has 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 demonstrated um that it has considered the the context and the World Heritage Site and it's it's proposing something that very much fits within within that framework. Um just on the disabled parking, um the, I think Andy Dingwall's given a fairly um comprehensive response on on how uh the level of parking is considered to be acceptable. I know there's there's differing views here on that and the proportion of disabled parking within that um is is compliant with our policy. Um we've actually got uh went to quite a lot level of detail with the architect to make sure that those spaces are fully compliant and that they're fully accessible. Um I presume that if if there were, because the apartments from the outset um will be kitted out wheelchair-accessible, I'm I'm sure that there would be scope within that internal car park if there were eh you more than two users who specifically wanted a car parking space, I'm sure there would be a way to um to accommodate that. But I think, you know, we can't assume that everybody who would be living in that building would want a parking space. So um so our, the provision made is is compliant with policy and supported by highways officers. Um point on green space, yes, eh the there isn't space on this site to provide um ground level amenity space and the the um the the scheme does include two, a a second floor and a third floor, uh open-air um amenity space, which is probably quite unusual um for for a building of this nature. So we, on the um north-east side of the building, there are two in- internal terraces, sorry, t- terraces within the envelope of the building but that are open-air, so residents would be able to use those. And there's a a space for a rooftop um uh garden space um on the fourteenth, there's a, I think I'm correcting, same fourteenth floor. Um but yeah, the the contribution would need to be made for open spaces because obviously we can't provide a policy-compliant um green space with open space within this site. I think that's everything I can say in response.
Would Ian like to come in now?
Hello? Can can you hear me?
Yes, please, if you can hear you, Ian, if you ca- if you carry on with your comment, please.
Okay, uh I just thought I'd make a couple of points in relation to the construction noise. Um firstly, uh the, it is true that we had, we had an enormous complaints about um activity at the at the Isle of Ferry Terminal built um construction. Um but and over over the last three weeks, that was a a particular challenge there for that project because they're building out over the the West Waterloo Dock and the piling involved there, I think it was an unavoidable level of noise that was was due to carry on for three weeks and that, so that should have fin- finished by now. Um I think the application you're looking for that today isn't of the same order of magnitude in terms of the complexity and the the challenge involved, though I don't think that it should be uh as bad as what you're getting from the the Isle of Man site. And the second point is that 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 Isle of Man site is on the other side of of Waterloo Warehouse from from the current site. So in terms of the people that were getting the worst of that noise, that they are there on the other side of the building, I don't think that they'll be getting the same. So it'll be a different tranche of complaints perhaps if if there is an issue, but it won't be the same people getting seeing it again. Um and and hopefully with the applicant today, obviously cognisance of the issues is and he's been uh seems to have taken that on board, so hopefully uh we we won't get anything like the complaints that we got from the Isle of Man site.
Thank you, Ian. Um now councillor Hanson, you still have your hand raised, so do you have a follow-up question? Well, I don't think that councillor Hanson does have a follow-up question. So um let's see more.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
I've got two two comments to make. One to councillor Raz and saying the green space. One of the uh plans by Peel is develop a huge park over over the Dock Wall. Um and so that will provide some green space for our for our residents and, you know, there's lots of green space in Kirkdale anyway, so um and we've got beautiful canal process and all that kind of stuff, so, you know, we're not, we're not the back of the beyond, we have got a lot of lovely stuff in in Kirkdale. In terms of the 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 last comments from the from the officer, the um the 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 issue with the um Isle of Man ferry, yes, the piling is unavoidable, I understand that, so the residents, there and there's been lots of conversations taking place. But even so, and the the there's dialogue set up between the development company and 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 the residents, there's still issues. And that's that that uh complex is way away from uh where the actual Waterloo Dock Dock and and Key uh complex is, it's the other side of Princess Parade, no, head 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 node. This this uh 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 application is gonna be right opposite the um the Waterloo Warehouse, Waterloo Key. Yeah, and there is gonna be a substantial amount of noise, nuisance and disturbance to those residents. And no sooner have 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 that started, we've got the uh application on the other side of the Waterloo Warehouse, Waterloo Key, we've got Peel coming in doing whatever, you know, the 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 eh in in terms of a council, as a council, we have to start doing things differently. There's over two hundred, four hundred people living in those apartments and their lives are gonna become terrible unless we as a council start to become proactive, yeah, and deal with these issues and problems that the 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 nature of these the developments eh create for the for the people that the South of Malcolm represents. And I'll finish on that, Chair.
Thank you councillor Hanson. I don't know if um Felicity needs to come back on that. It's up to you, Felicity. Otherwise, I'm gonna move to the vote. All right, well, I I think Ian Rushford, do you want to come in again? Would you go ahead?
Uh, sorry, just 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 to clarify, that the 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 recent activity was for the Man um Ferry Terminal, I think that is closer to the Waterloo Dock, I think councillor Hanson referred to the. Parade and that's the cruise line terminal is 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 further away and that's a separate to the Isle of Man Ferry Terminal, Which I think is is closer to Waterloo, sorry, that was all clarification.
But however, Ian, while you're on, you will, if there are any complaints, You will be coming in and trying to deal with them, won't you?
Of course, yes, of course, yeah, and 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 perhaps advance with the residents Will obviously help with that, full woman's full armed. Perhaps the Isle of Man recent developments, perhaps the data wasn't flagged as it should have been.
Councillor Hanson, do you want to come back again? The hand's still up.
Councillor Hanson, you're still on mute.
We can't hear you.
This development is right on the Duff Road, right opposite Waterloo Gate and Waterloo Warehouse. When you look where the Isle of Man is, it's over the over the way, it's the other side of Princess Parade. I just find it incredible that an officer can say that there's no real issues there, there is real issues and there has been from day one. So all of them saying loud and clear, and I'll be very loud and very clear, yeah? This development creates anything like the issues that the Isle of Man ferry is creating, look out. Just look out because I am up to here with it and so is Malcolm, we are getting battered On a daily basis for issues and concerns in relation to the Isle of Man ferry. So just just be warned, yeah, and we won't be we won't be nice about it. And and just give a clear warning now to officers, I am not putting up with the nonsense that I am getting on a daily basis. Yeah, and all genuine stuff coming from residents from the Waterloo Warehouse and Waterloo Gate. So just just be aware where me and Malcolm will be coming from.
Chair, if I if I may make a few comments at this juncture, if just to address some of the points raised during the course of debates. Obviously, it's been quite a lengthy and somewhat heated debate reflecting the Clear roles of of local councillors in passionately representing their communities. And obviously, that's included at times disagreement with the professional assessments of officers, Which is absolutely fine, that that's in accordance with process. What I would remind members quite clearly Is that whilst you can disagree with professional assessments given by our officers, There is a fine line to be drawn in terms of how those criticisms are levelled. So I'll just remind members of your respective obligations under the code of conduct and the member officer protocol. Moving beyond that and returning to the issues raised correctly and legitimately by councillor Hanson, I think it it's important that the committee understands why these have been raised. With regard to the issue of the development of the new Isle of Man terminal, Councillor Hanson has given that as an example by way of context. That is a different location and is distinct from the current application site. Councillor Hanson was merely, I believe, giving that to demonstrate the impact of large scale construction projects And how these manifest on local residents already living in the area, so that's by way of example only And expressing concern on behalf of himself and fellow ward colleagues In relation to how this development, should you be minded to approve it, will then potentially impact on local residents. As a counterpoint to that, Similarly, officers have explained the various conditions which are included on the report, Including requirements for a construction management plan and indeed the environmental health officer Has set out various measures to deal with any complaints and monitoring of noise as may care. But again, just to remind members to please, obviously representing your wards and communities Is goes to the heart of your role and responsibilities, have a reminder to ensure that you do so With due regard to showing respect for the opinions of other other members of the committee and indeed for officers. With that in mind, I'll revert to the Chair and the Chair to make the relevant comments.
Thank you, Michael, for reminding us about the code of conduct. But can I also remind people that we do have a constructor management plan in place? And that the environmental health and planning officers Will be You know, imposing that and have powers to impose them. So can I move that recommendation as amended be agreed?
Thank you, Chair, do members firstly have any Any amendments they wish to move, in which case can you please unmute your microphone, put your camera on and clearly move your amendment if that is the case? No, in which case we will move immediately across to the vote. And the vote is therefore, the recommendation as moved by the Chair, the effect of which will be to approve the recommendation Subject to conditions as included in the case officer report. So first of all, I'll go through members in sequence, so Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you, Chair, councillor Prince.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Both.
Would you like your dissent recorded by name, Joe? Okay, will do, thank you, councillor Kennedy.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, would you like your abstention recorded, Malcolm?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, will do. Councillor Marret. Just could you reiterate your vote, please, Billy, for clarity? Thank you. And councillor Juárez.
Against.
Would you like your dissent recorded by name?
Yes, please.
Thank you, just to confirm in terms of the outcome of the vote, we have four members who have voted in favour of the application. We have two members voting against and we have one member who has abstained. The effect of that therefore is the application is approved on that basis. And we'll now return to our published agenda, which does well bring us on to our next item of business, Number five on the list, and that relates to the Chicago Building located in Whitechapel, Liverpool One And which is in Central Ward, for reference, those of you with papers before you, pages forty seven to sixty six of the agenda Sets out a detailed case officer report and accompanying location plan by way of assistance, thank you, Chair.
And can I invite Harriet Powell Hall to come in to comment on the presentation? Harriet, would you like to come in?
Hi there, can everyone hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Brilliant. Good morning, everyone, it's nice to be here. Okay. My name's Harriet Powell Hall, I'm the agent for the application. I'm excited to talk to you through the scheme for the residential development of the Chicago Buildings. This first slide illustrates the existing building proposed for redevelopment Along with some existing and interior and exterior views of the building. This building that we're looking for is, sorry, Is previously Black's Department Store and makes up the extent of the residential refurbishment. The Chicago Buildings will be refurbished with the upper floors being remodelled to create a total number of twenty four apartments, The schedule for which is five studios, twelve one beds and two beds created, next slide, please. This slide illustrates the location of the proposed development within the city context. The Chicago Buildings is situated in the central retail core of Liverpool City Centre, adjacent to the Met Quarter. The property has three prominent facades to the streets on Whitechapel, Stanley Street and Button Street. It sits on the edge of the Castle Street Conservation Area and the Chicago Building acts as a key gateway building into the Cavern Quarter behind it. The building has recently undergone an extensive period of maintenance and repairs for the facade to preserve the external appearance and envelope And ensure it is fit for purpose going forward. There are two existing retail units, the ground floor, which are in use, Holland and Barrett's and Wong's Jewelers, next slide, please. This slide contains the proposed plans for the lower grounds and ground floor levels of the building, Showing proposed amenities for the residents as well as the shop units that will be retained. This includes a proposed residence gym with an accessible entrance which will be accessed from Button Street, that's on the lower ground. There will also be bike and bin store facilities located on the lower ground floor. Next slide, please. So this slide represents the typical residential floor plans which are situated from the first floor level to the fourth floor level. Our design has been developed to maximise the internal floor plan and provide a mix of residential units across the four levels. The upper floors will be sensitively converted and remodelled, including the existing staircases and lift And retaining the existing entrance points to the building. The atrium space, which is also to be retained and acts as a desirable feature for future residents. And the final slide, please. So in summary, the refurbishment of the Chicago Buildings aims to retain the existing fabric and character of the building And highlight its architectural quality. The upper floors will be sensitively converted and remodelled, including the existing staircase and lift To provide a mix of apartments across each floor, a total of twenty four apartments are proposed. There was positive pre-app feedback received stating that a change of use application would be supported in this area. And the proposal is in accordance with the policy S one and S three in the adopted development plan and the M P P F. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. That's Justin Borre from councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair, and I note that you've got Ten percent of the apartments are fully accessible and fifty percent are M four two compliant. And I just, I'm just seeking assurance actually that the lift will be a firefighter lift So suitable for anybody using a wheelchair or with other mobility difficulties in case of emergency.
Okay, so we are currently working with a fire engineer and we have had discussions on that this week. They have made an assurance that there will be protected Entryways and there's a sprinkler system that's going to be included throughout the whole building. So we we have had that noted and we are going to work up that plan. They have said that in terms of building regs, we won't need a firefighting lift in that space, so we then Provide these other Things in accordance with the with building regs.
Okay, so can I just seek clarification on that, there'll be a sprinkler system and
We have our case officer raising his hand on this issue, so what I'm going to do He comes in now, all right, so Fergal, would you come in now, please?
Thank you, Chair, yeah, in in relation to councillor Thompson's point, The developers of the site, they're not required from a building control point of view to require a firefighting lift. The fire strategy is a staple strategy Along with a kind of floor and flat compartmentalisation. So in the event of fire, there would be a time Limit from when kind of each flat would be protected and within that time The fire brigades could could get into the building and then evacuate the residents. And also, and what the agent has just touched on, There is a new requirement for a development of this size to have a sprinkler system internally. So obviously, in the case of fire, hopefully That would literally dampen any fire initially. But answer councillor Thompson's query, there is not a requirement from a building control point of view To given the size of the building to have a firefighting lift as part of this development.
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Chair, do you want me to repeat?
So I'll take it that councillor Thompson's not going to come back on this. And I don't know if councillor Hanson has got his hand up from before or whether he has a question or not. Okay, well, there don't seem to be any other questions coming in, so I'm now going to hand over to our case officer. So going back to you, Fergal, to point out and summarise on the case.
Chair, thank you very much, Fergal McVoy, team leader for the city central development management team. Sharing members, you've got a full and detailed report in front of you today and you've also Listened to a very informative presentation from the agent, the proposal is to convert the formal former Wade Smith and then kind of Black's Outdoor retail shop into residential accommodation On the four upper floors, the two existing ground floor retail units, that is Holland and Barrett Food Health Store And Wong's Jewelers would remain in situ as part of the development. Proposal is to convert the four upper floors into twenty four residential units With a spread from studios to one bed and two bed apartments. The size of the units are from studios between fifty one and fifty four square metres And for two bed apartments up to seventy two to seventy six square metres. So from a city centre point of view, these would be very generous apartment sizes. The application has raised no objections from statutory consultees. You'll note within the report that there is comments received from environmental health, Highways, the recycling team and the inclusive heritage and inclusive design officer Who are all supportive of the proposal. The application has been assessed on a variety of issues from principle of development. In relation to the principle of development, it is within the main retail area of the city centre. There would be a lot of retail accommodation, however, if people are familiar with the layout Of the building previously, these would be all at the upper floor. The ground floor, as I said, is occupied by two retail units and an existing lift and escalator to The retail uses on the upper floors, so any retail loss would be limited to the upper floors. However, it is welcome that a building of this attractiveness and importance On the entrance to Cavern Quarter is to be converted into residential accommodation. In terms of the design, character and heritage assets, it's within the World Heritage Site and also Within Castle Street Conservation Area, your heritage officer is supportive of the scheme. And equally so in terms of residential, environmental amenity, highways and inclusive design, The scheme is supported by your officers. This section one O six of sixty eight thousand eight hundred pounds Is required as part of the scheme and the applicant is paying the full amount, so Chair, Unless any members today have any queries for me, any further questions.
I'll see any other further questions at the moment. Does anybody got any questions? Okay, so I'm going to move to the vote. So can I move that the recommendation be agreed?
Thank you, Chair, do colleagues have any amendments or further comments before I undertake the vote on the item? No, in which case Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Prince.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Thank you, councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Marret. Thank you, add councillor Juárez.
Agreed.
Thank you, just to confirm the outcome of the vote is unanimous approval And we will therefore move on to our next item of business, which is item number six on today's agenda. And which relates to cell thirteen on the Garston Shore Road at Liverpool International Business Park in Speedgarst Ward. Pages sixty seven to eighty six of the agenda pack comprises the case officer report and accompanying location plan, Chair, your comments.
Well, I have that we have President Miranda Bell, now I've been told, Miranda, and I should correct me, That you're present for questions, so that the presentation is going to be done by the case officer, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for coming along, Miranda, for questions, so can I hand over to our case officer for the presentation, please?
Thank you, Chair, my name's John Woodward, I'm the planning officer for the south team on the committee today. The application you've got before you is for a plot of land called cell thirteen, Which is at the southernmost extent of the Liverpool International Business Park on Garston Shore Road. It was originally intended to be an open exhibition area within the the business park, but has never been used as such. The site has, over the years, has become overgrown and sort of naturalised scrubland at the moment. The proposal we have before us is to build a six thousand square metre Business or warehouse unit with a mezzanine office space. And it would be positioned in the centre of the site with parking for eighty two cars on the one side of the building And a separate service entrance and service yard on the on the opposite side. The building would be set back from the road behind a belt of native species planting And a wetland margin which would be part of a sustainable drainage system. There being, we've extended, consulted quite widely on the scheme. There've been no objections from any parties or any consultees about the proposals. Running through the assessment that we've done, the proposal for business use on the international business park is fully compliant with the unitary development plan and the emerging local plan allocations for the site. The highways colleagues are happy with the, with any traffic that will be generated by the scheme can be accommodated on the existing highway network. And they're also happy with the provision of parking and the servicing for the unit. Terms of design, the office space would be at the front of the building to add interest to what is essentially a large cladding box. But there's also details been added to the primary corners of the building to give a bit of interest. And the design is very much in keeping with other units that have been put on the business park. And some of the more recent ones have got similar sort of flashes of colour on the corners. The height, massing and the materials, as I say, are generally in keeping with the surroundings. There are no trees of any size that would mean they would be recorded in a tree survey on the site. And so the site would be cleared and we've got no concerns about the general losses of the vegetation, partly because the landscape plan that has been submitted has got very much an ecological bias to it. And there'd be habitat and tree planting along the front fringe of the site, which we consider will make a visual and ecological contribution to the area. The ecology of the site has been considered by our consultants Mias and by Natural England because of its position adjacent to the Mersey estuary and the protected European sites that are associated with the estuary. They're happy that, they believe the site currently offers little habitat, particularly for the estuary birds that are the reason for the protection of the Mersey estuary. And they consider that the landscaping will make a positive contribution to the general biodiversity of the area. The applications recommended for approval subject to a legal agreement that would require twenty four thousand pound for street tree contributions and four thousand two hundred and thirty six each for public art and monitoring. So in summary, the scheme's really to be welcomed. It's taking up an unused plot within the business park, hopefully bring some jobs. It complies with all our policies for the business park and design. And on that basis, it's recommended for approval.
Thank you very much for that. Now, have any questions? Can people who have their hands raised on the last item, please lower them? And can I also ask that people, if you're not speaking, that you be on mute please? I don't seem to have any questions, John.
Thank you. About the cladding, I know it's not a residential building, but is the cladding safe?
Yes, it is. I've been asked that numerous times councillor Prince, in light of Grenfell and all the controversy since. But yes, it is safe.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you. But I'm happy with that answer if that's what you asked.
Thank you, that is what I asked councillor Prince. I'm sorry, the sound quality is worse. But that is why it's essential that if we're not speaking now, I think we're going to have to be on mute. The sound quality does seem to deteriorate since the beginning of the meeting. So I am going to move to the vote in that case. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Any further comments from members please? No? In which case Chair, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson. Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Kennedy, just unmute your microphone. Councillor Mara.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just councillor Kennedy, if you can hear us, just unmute your microphone. Otherwise, you'll be counted as not voting on this particular item.
Agreed.
Thank you, thank you. In which case the voting is unanimous and the application is therefore approved on that basis. And we'll therefore move on to our next item of business, which is number seven on today's agenda, and which relates to number thirty eight Longfellow Street, Liverpool eight in Pickton Ward. Pages eighty seven to ninety four of the agenda comprise the case officer report and accompanying location plan. And just a reminder to everyone, as indicated by the Chair, if you were not speaking actively on screen, please keep your microphone muted and for officers and for public speakers, please also make sure your camera is turned off. Thank you Chair.
So we don't have any speakers on this particular application. So I'm going to hand over again to the same case officer to comment and summarise the issues. So over to you, John.
Okay, thank you Chair. This is an application for a house extension. It's been brought to the planning committee because the applicant is in line with the council and there's been an objection registered to the proposals. The property is a two-storey semi-detached house and the application is for a two-storey reside extension and a single-storey rear extension. And those are the existing plans that you've got on it. Hopefully, we can have a look at the, okay, there we go. The object was, lived in a property at the rear of the house and they were concerned that the two-storey extension, when originally proposed, would project beyond the rear wall of the house and would lead to overlooking of the properties at the rear. This aspect of the extension has now been amended so that the two-storey extension is now only to the side of the property with the single-storey extending across the rear, which is, you can see from the right hand, the bottom right hand drawing there, the two-storey on the side, the single story at the rear. As a result of the amendment, we announced, the officers are now satisfied that the revised proposal would be in keeping with the existing dwelling, would not unduly impact on the neighbouring dwellings and is compliant with our house extension policies. And on that basis, we're recommending the application for approval.
Are there any questions? Oh Hanson, you seem to have your hand up. Councillor Hanson.
Chair, I believe councillor Marat may have his hand indicating to speak well.
Councillor Marat, would you like to come in? Please, you've got your hand up, would you like to ask your question?
Apologies, sorry Chair. John, has the neighbour who originally complained seen the new plans and are they happy with them?
They've been reconsulted as far as the aspect that they were objected to has been removed. The part of the extension that was of concern has been taken away. So as far as we're concerned, we've addressed their objection.
Okay, thank you.
I want to move to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Just to remind councillor Hanson, if you're able to hear us properly, your hand is still raised and we are taking it that you're not, it's from a previous item. Unless, if that is the case, can you just confirm on the microphone? Okay, that's great, thank you councillor Hanson. In which case we'll move formally to the vote unless there's further comments from members. No? Chair, then your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Marat.
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on the item. The outcome is the unanimous vote in favour and the application is therefore approved on that basis, subject to conditions including the case officer report. We'll now move on to our final item of business on today's agenda. Number eight on the agenda, which relates to number one six eight Richmond Row Liverpool three, which is located within Everton Row, Everton Ward rather. Chair, as you will know from your notes, we have a number of speakers in terms of the applicant and the agent. And whilst they come online and you invite them to speak, I'll bring a presentation on accordingly.
Thank you very much. Oliver Billys and Adrian Thompson present. I don't know which of you would like to speak first, but if that's.
Thank you Chair. I would like to just address the committee for a couple of minutes.
Absolutely fine Adrian, thank you, yes.
Great, thank you very much for inviting us to have this opportunity. There are only really a couple of points that I want to make. In the report before you, your officers have taken you through some length, some of the complexities around the the policy context to this application. I just want to sort of focus on what I think is the most significant aspect of that, which is that this current application follows a previous scheme that was actually before this committee a little over two years ago in December two thousand and eighteen, which granted planning permission for the change in use of the existing building from employment purposes to become a hotel with some retained office space. That planning permission is still extant, that that's there and available for my client to implement. So the principle of the change in use has already been accepted by the committee. And today what we're looking at is a variation to what has been approved already, which looks to put an additional story of hotel accommodation on the back part of the building. The second issue that I just wanted to touch on relates to the comments that have been made by the adjoining occupier, who runs a skip manufacturing business. We recognise that their concerns as to whether or not the hotel use might in any way in future restrict their ability to operate. My client has employed noise specialists to look at this issue. That information has been submitted to the council, it's been looked at by your own in-house independent experts in environmental health and your officers have confirmed that the measures that have been put forward to ensure that the accommodation my client is intending to provide will be suitably soundproofed and ventilated will ensure that there shouldn't be any grounds in future for concern about the activity next door and therefore the business next door, they're safeguarded going into the future as well. Those are the only two points that I wanted to make at this juncture. If there are any questions that you have, myself and my client are here to try and assist you with that. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you Adrian, that was very clear. Are there any questions? Well, there don't seem to be because I think councillor Hanson has already acknowledged that he seems to have his hand raised on a, on a long-term basis. I wanted to invite now the case officer to come in, but I also wanted to add that Dr Ian Rushford is here about the noise issue. And if he would like to come in after the case officer, I would welcome him doing so. So can I hand over to our case officer please?
Thank you Chair. Can everybody hear me and see me?
I can hear you John.
Excellent, thank you. My name is John Hayes, I am the planning officer for development management in the north of the city. Chair, you've obviously got a full report in front of you and had a brief presentation there from the agent on behalf of the applicant. Just to clarify a couple of things, the proposal is to use the property for mixed use purposes comprising a small element of office use on the ground floor with the remainder to be used as an hotel. I think it's probably not as clear as it could be within the report, but the way that the hotel is to operate is more akin to the apart hotel type operation. So this isn't a sort of twenty four seven managed facility. And you can see from the layout, the way it's configured is that they're more like an apartment type arrangement than they are, you know, your travel lodge type hotel room. Nonetheless, it is described and will operate, as I say, as a hotel, more of an apartment hotel. In terms of the issues that are of concern to us as officers and you as a planning committee, as you've heard from the agent there, that there's quite a lot of narrative around the principle of use. And the reason we've gone into that is because there has been some policy shift from the application in twenty eighteen, which now favors more closely the proposed use here. Previously, we had the UDP which allocated for industrial use. As part of the emerging local plan, there's been various industrial surveys. This area has now been identified as an area for mixed use and that reflects some of the changes that have gone on in that area, particularly with residential schemes closer to the St Anne Street end. But nonetheless, the whole area is one that is transitioning to more of a mixed use area, involving these types of uses together with the existing industrial uses. So the conclusion from that Chair is that this use is acceptable. In addition, you've already heard from the agent there that the property has already benefits from an existing planning permission. The purpose of this application is to add a number of additional bedroom spaces by the erection of an additional extension there. And I think you saw that on the plans. Again, as has been mentioned in the presentation, there has been an objection from the skip hire business adjacent to the property. They are concerned that the use of the property as a hotel might result in noise complaints and therefore affect their ability to carry out their manufacturing process. They also raised some concerns about the noise assessment that was submitted. And obviously, I'll bring in my colleague from environmental health in a moment. But essentially, we reconsidered the report. The report's been resubmitted in the light of those concerns that were raised, addressed the various issues that the skip manufacturing company had raised. And the various mitigation measures that are being proposed are considered satisfactory by our environmental health colleagues to provide both a level of amenity for occupiers of the hotel whilst also ensuring an adequate noise attenuation such that the risk of noise complaint is to be significantly reduced. Just a couple of other issues Chair. Obviously, there's been some alterations to the building that were carried out previously, but also in addition to the proposed second floor extension. Given the form of the building, given the wider context, your officers are satisfied with the various works that are proposed and have no objection to them. And then in relation to car parking, highway safety, again, your officers have looked at this in highways and are satisfied that it would not give rise to any significant concerns in terms of highway safety. Finally Chair, you'll see from the report that there is a requirement to pay section one of six in relation to trees, landscaping and public art. And again, the applicants have confirmed that they are happy to pay that and that's included as part of the recommendation. Chair, just one final point that I would make, and that is in relation to conditions. Clearly, as I said earlier, this is not a twenty four seven managed facility. It'll be managed during the day but not during the evening. Nonetheless, there is a management plan to address that point. That is referenced in the plans condition, but I think it's important that the condition also makes it clear that the premises are operated in accordance with that management plan. So that will be an additional condition, just requiring the operations to be in accordance with the plan that has been submitted to your officers. Happy to answer any questions Chair.
Well, I'd like to bring in Ian Rushford and then I'll take questions. So Ian, would you like to make a comment about the sound insulation please?
Yeah, I'm happy with the baggage of sound insulation being put forward. I think one point that may be worth highlighting is, so there was an earlier application in twenty eighteen with a noise assessment. And then this has been submitted as a variation of the scheme. The objectors next door, the skip hire company, were concerned that because the latest acoustic report was drafted in. report was drafted in July of 2020, that it might have been not reflective of their activities because of the COVID shutdown, that they weren't doing as much activity during that period. However, the later revision of the report was based on the noise survey that took place for the first report. They've amended the report, but they based the conclusions of the July 2018 noise survey, when obviously pre-COVID, the skip activity was at its full whack. And so I'm happy that it is a robust assessment. I think one other point that might, John might not, I don't think he mentioned, but just in case he didn't, there's a condition there which suspends permitted development rights for the conversion of offices to residential, which is a useful safeguard there in case, because otherwise, the office space, which is an aspect to this, could get converted to residential without the safeguard of the sound insulation package that we've secured for the residential aspect, the hotel aspect, sorry. If any, any further questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Well, there don't seem to be, so thank you to John and Ian, and I'd like to move to the vote. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Noting the comments from the case officer also in terms of the revision to condition relating to management plan, I believe is to be incorporated within. Do members have any further comments before we move to the vote? No? In which case Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat? Councillor Marat, sorry, I didn't hear clearly. Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on the item of business. The voting is unanimous and therefore the recommendation subject to that amendment to conditions is therefore approved. That concludes today's items, Chair. If I can revert to you to conclude today's proceedings.
Everybody who's attended today, or your patients. And I would remind you that planning is now on a three-weekly cycle. So I'll see you again, hopefully, in three weeks' time.